Call our county commission into order of our May 12, 2022, Rutherford County Board of Commissioners into session. Last, all members in the audience, if you would, please stand at this point in time. I'd like to ask our chaplain, Trey Gooch, to come forward and lead us in our prayer, to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag and to the Tennessee Flag. Chaplain, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let's go to our Father in prayer. Oh, Father, we love you and we praise your name, for we know that all good comes from you. And, Father, as you know, we will be honoring quite a few students in Rutherford County tonight, students who have excelled in their passion. And we pray sincerely that they will continue the path that they've chosen to become good and great citizens. And, Father, we praise you for guiding them in making good choices today that will benefit them years from now. And, Father, we are so thankful for their parents, the way that they have brought them up. And we know that today is kind of difficult to be a parent these days, and so we thank you for sheltering the parents and giving them courage to make decisions, to follow along with their children, to keep up with their children, to support their children, and love their children. And, Father, we're also thankful for the school system, the taxpayers, and the donors to the private schools by giving them an opportunity to excel in their passion. And, Father, we just love Jesus Christ so much, who became obedient to death, even death upon a cross, so that we may have life everlasting. And it's through his name that we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Three white stars on the field of blue. God keep them strong and ever true. It is with pride and love that we salute the flag of Tennessee.
Let's get everybody to please have a seat. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Commissioner David Gammon.
President.
Commissioner Piercy.
Here.
Commissioner Rather.
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Commissioner Buchanan.
Here.
Commissioner Cushe.
Present.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Gurley.
Here.
Commissioner Blair.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Virgil Gammon. Commissioner Harris.
Here.
Commissioner Dodd.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Here.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Here.
Commissioner Key.
Here.
Commissioner Gooch.
Here.
Commissioner Serrano.
Yeah.
We have a quorum, 20 present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have a quorum tonight, so we can now conduct our business before us. I'd like to call on Chairman Pro Tem Jeff Phillips for approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Ketchum. I've reviewed the minutes of our April 14 meeting. I find them to be in order and move that we dispense with the reading and that be adopted as presented.
Members, you've heard the motion. And a second. Commissioner Cook. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Members, I'm going to excuse myself. I'm going to come down to the well. Commissioner Cook, if you would join me. Members, we have, tonight, we have a resolution in recognition of Riverdale High School Future Farmers of America. So at this point in time, I'd like to ask them and their teachers, if you would, please come up and join us in a well, what commissioner has Riverdale in their district? All right, Commissioner McAdoo, would you like to join us? Who has Community Care in their district? All right. You're welcome to join us as well. All, please come on up. As a member of the Community Care Board and chairman, and Commissioner Carol Cook has been a member of that board for...
Too long.
Too long. We won't discuss that tonight. But we're doing some great things at Community Care. As you know, we're remodeling, making it better for our citizens to be able to utilize that. We're planning a new daycare facility, the first in the state to be 24/7 daycare facility up to 125 kids that could be housed there by license of the state of Tennessee. So it'll be 24/7 to take care as a recruiting tool and a retention tool for all of our county employees to bring their children there. So we started last year with an opportunity to plant a garden, and FFA came out from Riverdale High School and got started a little bit late and got the workhouse inmates out trying to get the weeds out. So we decided we're going to do it right this year, and I do believe that we do have it right this year. So a couple of weeks ago, we went out and plowed up the field outside Community Care, and we had a good planting time. And with all these students that are here, thank you for coming out, and I think it was a great experience for everybody to... I'll let you say something in a minute and tell everybody what we planted. Because I was just dropping seeds. I have no idea what it was going to be. But we had a lot of fun, and I think...
The biggest farmers up there now.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And that's some of the kids that came out, our director's son and wife, they were planting. He had that little shovel, but they were on top of it. And so would like to read this resolution. Resolution recognition of the Riverdale High School Future Farmers of America. Whereas the last two years, Riverdale High School, FFA students assisted in the fruition of the Community Care Rutherford County Community Garden Project. The garden has been a tradition for CCRC for many years, and whereas the Riverdale, FFA students volunteered their time to plan and tend the CCRC garden, which will help provide fresh fruits and vegetables to the residents of Community Care of Rutherford County Facility. Whereas this has been an exciting project, and special commendation is due to Christopher Martin and Ashley Katata?
Katata.
Katata. For outstanding job with organization and execution of the planning process, and for all the Riverdale FFA members for their dedication and commitment to others, which made the garden project possible. Now therefore be it resolved by Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that we extend this resolution of recognition to Chris Martin, Ashley Katuta, and Riverdale High School FFA members resolved this 12th day of May, 2022. Is there a motion?
So move.
So move. And a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Your words on the resolution, so we have a copy of that for you. Mr. Martin, if you'd like to say a few words...
Sure.
...on behalf of your students.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank Mayor Ketchum, Commissioner Cook, and the entire county commission for bestowing this honor upon us. This has been a great project for our students. Some of the things that we planted out there, we've got tomato plants, we have cucumbers. The residents at Community Care, from what we understand, love to snap beans and that sort of thing in their spare time, so it's going to be some great things for them to do with their activities. I would, while I'm up here, also want to tell you a little bit about what FFA is and what we do in agricultural education every single day. The National FFA Organization promotes premier leadership, personal growth, and career success through agricultural education. Our motto is learning to do, doing to learn, earning to live, and living to serve. And students, for sure, found the living to serve portion of that motto when we went out to take care of the residents at Community Care. But students also in this organization are also doing things like doing competitive events to learn career skills that they're going to need. They take part in what's called a supervised agriculture experience program, where these students go out and do their own. Students have things like market goats. I think Emma here even has a market goat. We'll do it again this summer. Students have jobs out in the community, and they're able to tie these things together to make them not only the future leaders of agriculture, but the future leaders in our community. So we wanted to thank the commission for bestowing this honor upon us, and we hope that you have a great night. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
in Rutherford County, Tennessee. This point in time, I'd like to move to item G on your agenda, members, resolution recognition of Middle Tennessee Christian School Trap Teams. Commissioner Harris, and you will be doing item G and H, resolution recognition Middle Tennessee Christian School Girls Basketball as well.
MTCS has been special to me for a while. I've owned it off. I've been associated with them for about 16 years. One of their principals, Robert Stain, somebody who I admire, and I talk to him twice a week. And it's not that we're friends, it's just I've got some really bad kids. So I'm kidding. So anyway, one of the things that I enjoy as being a commissioner is when we celebrate our student athletes. And we want these ladies and gentlemen to know that we're very proud of them, and I speak for all the commissioners. And it just comes to a point when you just admire our youth. And we had a trap team here, which is from former county commissioner Adam Coggan, won the state championship, and which is, if you understand these guys, they practice so much. They dedicate and devote themselves so much to it. And I have been watching them for years, and it's just impressive to watch what they've done. They, I believe it was 97% of targets is what you hit? They hit 97% of targets. And Luke Johnson is, Luke's not here, is he? Luke won the individual world championship, World Grand American Clay Target Championship. He hit 372 in a row. So I don't know about y'all, but when the zombie apocalypse comes, he's my man. And then also, we're going to do this, we're going to do the girls' basketball team. Hannah had a great year. They went 25 and 10 and made it to the championship. Unfortunately, they lost to Webb, which cheated. I'm kidding. So Hannah, we're very thankful for what you've done. It's a great year. And, you know, they're going to get better. They're coming back strong, you know, next year. So I'm going to read this resolution. I'm going to start off with the trap team first, and then I'll go to the girls' basketball. Whereas during the state competition in June of 2021, the MTCS Cougar Trap Team won the Tennessee Scholastic Clay Target Program Varsity State Championship with an average of 96% of targets hit. Whereas the trap members are Wyatt Cade, Slater Coggan, Kayson Dement, Owen Fair, Seth Jordan, Gaines Howson, Luke Johnson, Taylor Nixon, Colton Phillips, and Will Thompson. Whereas in addition to the team winning the state championship, Luke Johnson won the 2021 ATA World Grand American Clay Target Championship. And whereas there has been an exciting and successful season, and special recommendation is due to head coach Adam Coggan, assistant coach Will Cade, and athletic director Jason Piercy for their dedication and commitment, which made this championship possible for bringing the fine publicity to our community by their good sportsmanship and inspired team play. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that we extend this resolution of recognition to the 2021-2022 Middle Tennessee Christian School Trap Team and coaches for their success this 12th day of May. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion. Have a second. Commissioner P on the second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
The girls' basketball, whereas 2021-2022 Middle Tennessee Christian Girls Basketball Team was named the 2022 TSSAA Division II A State Runner-Up with an overall season record of 26 and 10 and a conference record of 20 and 6. Whereas the 2021-2022 team was the first team to go to the TSSAA State Tournament, thus setting a precedent for future MTCS girls' basketball. Whereas the MTCS girls' basketball team members are Ellie Shirley, Reagan Atkinson, Sarah Wisniewski, Sidney Cooper, Autumn Davis, Kaylee Jackson, Jalen Banks, Lindsay Wisniewski, Riley Smith Campbell, Owen Campbell, I'm sorry, Joanne LaFort, Clay Knight, Clay Schumake, Anna Clay Shirley, and team managers Leila Sullivan, Caitlin White, and Navia White, I hope I said that right, and Cameron Grayland. Whereas this has been an exciting and successful season, a special recommendation is due to head coach Hannah Jones, assistant coach Cliff Coleman, Arena Broughton, Grace Simpson, Brandy Mosley, and athletic director Jason Piercy for their dedication and commitment, which made this championship possible, and for bringing the fine publicity to our community by their good sportsmanship and inspired team play. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that we extend this resolution of recognition to the 2021-2022 Middle Tennessee Christian Girls Basketball Team, managers and coaches for their successful year. Resolve this 12th day of May, 2022. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion. Is there a second? Second, Commissioner Phillips and Commissioner Cook. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Coggan.
Thank you, Mayor Ketchum, Commissioner Harris, and fellow former, from a former commissioner, fellow commissioners. I just thank you all for this on behalf of Middle Tennessee Christian School and our student athletes. We thank you so much for this honor and this recognition. It is not without great administration that this program for trap especially would not be possible, and their support, and of course, our parents' support as well. So thank you again for this recognition.
I would echo everything he just said as well. Our MTCS community is small but mighty, and I'm really appreciative of this recognition, this honor, honored to be here for the girls and our coaches. It was an outstanding year, obviously, on the court, but off the court, they were fully supported and loved really, really well. Basketball is what they do, not who they are. So I think this is just going to hopefully set a precedent for the future female student athletes of our community. So thank you so much.
It's pleasing to take a few moments just to praise them and encourage them to continue doing this. Members, we have a few minutes. We've got about 10 minutes, so hopefully before we get into our public hearing, we're going to go with item I on the agenda, reappraisal is Rob Mitchell, and then followed right after that. So about five minutes apiece. Tax freeze and tax relief by Tab Beatty. We've asked both to come and kind of share with us. I'm sure everybody got their tax bill in the mail just recently, the reappraisal just recently. So we kind of want to lay the groundwork, just from an educational standpoint, to let everybody, instead of freaking out that their values went up so high. So Rob, you're recognized.
Someone left something here. If you're missing any glasses, the mayor has them. Thank you, commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to be here to speak with you tonight. As you have probably noticed in your mailbox, there is a love letter in there from the county. As my wife opened ours, she said, "This is not a tax bill, is not catchy enough. You should put, 'Don't panic, this is not a tax bill.'" The values up countywide are about 43% as the median increase. The appraised value of all properties in Rutherford County, as certified by the state as of January the 1st, is $52,750,000, $52,750,000. The value upon which the taxes will be levied, if you include, excluding office of state assessed properties, is $14,800,000, $14,800,000. So what that's important for you as commissioners is that for every penny, there's going to be approximately $1,480,000 in revenue that's generated. There are 123,830 active real estate parcels under management in Rutherford County and over 16,118 tangible personal property accounts. We see a growth in Rutherford County of around 12% every year. That has been the case for the last two years. We start our reappraisal cycle again July the 1st of 2022, and as of July, for the first year of the reappraisal cycle, we will have to review 45,972 parcels, process approximately 20,000 deed changes, map 5,000 or more new parcels, changes, and pickups. The second year of the review will review 46,000. The third year will review another 41,000, and our projection currently is that in real estate parcels by the year 2026, we'll have approximately 134,000 real parcels, and with the growth in our business community, probably somewhere in the range of 20,000 tangible personal property accounts. The revenue neutral rate, which everyone is excited to figure out, we have sent the documentation off to the state. We do not have a, we have a projection of what we believe it would be, but we think it's premature to make that widely known, because it can vary as the state makes adjustments to it. They may adjust it up, they may adjust it down, and while we could share a range, given an exact amount would be inappropriate at this time, because people will expect exactly whatever it is that comes out of your mouth as commissioners. If you tell them it's going to be $1.95, and it's actually not $1.95, whether it's lower or higher, you're still going to be the villain, because you didn't give them exactly the right number, and they were counting on that. So we'll do everything we can to help you. That's why we sent the heat map out to everyone in advance of the notices going out, so that you would kind of have a heads up as to what to expect when it hits, so that you would better be able to answer the questions that your constituents might have. If anyone in our office, myself, any of my staff can be of assistance to you in answering those questions, we're always there, we're always available to answer questions, and we're looking forward to having a very successful appeal process, which begins June 1st. So if someone calls the office and there isn't a resolution, they're happy to set an appointment with the county board, and we'll help guide them through the process of successfully appealing their valuation.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. We certainly appreciate that. And if you have any questions, you can call Rob. I'm sure he'll be in the office tomorrow, if you have any questions.
Thank you very much.
Rob, give your telephone number out.
Yeah, your personal cell.
615-426-7373.
Is that your personal cell?
That's my personal cellphone number. Call at any time.
Mayor Ketchum.
Yes.
Wait a minute, Mr. Mitchell. I was, I was the reason we're asked to come up here, and I have one specific question I'd like for you to answer, if you can, for the people here and for the people that's watching on television. We have a home, it's $250,000 assessment, and it's been raised to $450,000 assessment. How was that accomplished? How do you do that?
It's through market sales. It's a market sales analysis of the, of the sales in a market area.
And that's all?
And we're running a base rate off of that. So everything that we have is based off of local area sales. And we had 10,176 qualified sales, which means we determined that those, those were arms-length transactions, and they were valid sales that we built our statistical package off of.
Okay. I know we're pushed for time, but before we adjourn this meeting, I would like to address this before, again.
Sure. All right. Thank you, Commissioner.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Beatty, you've got four and a half minutes. I know you preach, but you can, you got it.
You don't want me to pass the hat, right?
No, sir.
Okay, it's not the purpose. We're talking about tax relief and tax freeze programs that help with property taxes, and those are two separate programs, but if you qualify, they're not mutually exclusive. You can be on both of those programs. So we'll talk about tax relief first. What does tax relief do? It actually pays part of the property taxes for those who qualify. And we have really three programs that fall under tax relief. One is for seniors aged 65 or older, and for disabled homeowners. So those are individuals who are disabled through social security. Now, those two programs have an income limit, and for 2022, using 2021 income, so we're using last year's income, income from 2021, because those income taxes are already done. When we're doing this program, we won't know what 2022 income is. That income limit is going to be in the neighborhood of $31,600 or less. And we'll be glad to go over specifics, but I'll give you, that includes social security, pensions, earned income, retirements, kind of all sources of income, for the applicant, their spouse, and all owners of the property. And we're glad to go over all this with you, but that gives you an idea. There is also tax relief for disabled veterans, and the rating is total and permanent disability from a service-connected disability through the Veterans Administration Office. There is no income limit for our disabled veterans. So there's no test of income. Doesn't matter what a veteran makes, they qualify if they're totally and permanently disabled. And also, that program applies for the spouse of a totally and permanently disabled veteran. So if your spouse is totally and permanently disabled and they pass away, their spouse, the widower or widower continues to qualify unless they remarry. And so that program also pays. And in Rutherford County, we match the state tax relief, because this is a state program. The county matches the state $2 for one. So every dollar that they get from the state, the county matches them $2 to a maximum match of $306. And I only know of one other jurisdiction in the state that matches two for one. There are some that match one for one, or 50 cents to a dollar, but that's something Rutherford County does, which is unusual, to match $2 for one on the, on the state program. So that's the tax relief program. And then we have the senior tax freeze, which only applies to those 65 or older. And there's an income limit for that, is 65 or older, and the income limit for that one is $44,920 for 2021 income. And that includes, as the other, all sorts of income. For both of these programs, it applies to your primary residence. It's not just any property you own. It has to be where you claim to be, your primary residence, and if you receive tax relief anywhere else in the state or anywhere else in the country, you can't. You know, you have to, you have to name one place as your, as your residence, and this is what it's for. There's a maximum of five acres that can be frozen. I don't want to get too much into details, but that's how that program works. And what it does is, it freezes your tax amount. And what it does is it freezes your tax amount. So in reappraisal, or if there's a tax increase, if you qualify for this program, your taxes don't increase. If they decline, if taxes go down, you get to participate in the decline and then you freeze at that lower amount. Neither one of these programs place any kind of lien on your property. When you pass away or you sell your property, you don't owe the county or the state anything back on those programs. It's not a deferral, it's a freeze and a payment. Both of these programs require that you reapply every year. So it's not a one and done. You have to come and reapply each and every year for those programs. And we'll, we'll help you do that in our offices and be glad to give you all that information. Because it's a reappraisal year, I know this question's coming up. For new applicants coming on now, their base year for tax freeze will be 2022. So whatever their taxes are in October, that becomes the base amount for that program. Now, the relief will, will pay, but the freeze, this 2022 will become their base year for that program. So they'll, they'll, whatever those taxes are, it's what they, they will participate in. Our number is eight-nine-eight, seven-seven, zero-five. Area code six-one-five, eight-nine-eight, seven-seven, oh, five. We'd be glad to talk with you. We set up appointments in our offices. We have an office in Murfreesboro and Smyrna. You can go to either office. Uh, we'll, we'll tell you what you need to bring and we'll set you up an appointment because there's over twenty-five-hundred parcels that participate. So if we don't do appointments, everybody wants to come between nine-thirty and eleven-thirty on Tuesday. And so we, we do appointments so you don't have a long wait. We fill out all the paperwork. You'll have to bring us some information, but you don't have to fill out the forms. We'll fill out all the forms, submit it. All you have to do is sign the paperwork.
Call Mr. Beatty if you want more information. We certainly appreciate you coming tonight, Mr. Beatty. We thank you so much for helping educate our general public. And so it'll be on RCTV and watch it live or on the loop.
What, what's that?
What's your personal cell phone number?
I'll, I'll, I'll send it to you in a few minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Beatty.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Now it's time for our public hearing. We're a few minutes past our public hearing time. Mr. Demasi, if you would please come forward. We have our first public hearing. You're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, everyone. Hope everyone's doing well tonight. Uh, we have four public hearings tonight. Uh, these all went relatively quickly at Planning Commission, so we'll just go ahead and dive right in. The first we have is by Mr. Bobby Warren. This is located at thirty-two ninety-four Midland-Fosterville Road. Existing zoning is residential low density, or RL, and they're asking for agricultural residential for their property. Information provided by the applicant states they would like to operate a dog boarding rescue facility. He proposes to construct a building that would be used for this purpose. They would still live on the property in the existing house. He envisions the building having a reception, office area, bathroom, grooming area, and outside covered runs. There is a concept plan that has been included with your agenda materials on your iPads. I would refer you to that. This is not a plan development application, so they're not bound by this, but this gives you an idea of how they would like to move forward. This use is defined as a kennel, which is classified as animal care and veterinarian services under our zoning ordinance. This is not an allowable use as either a minor or a major home-based business in the RL zone. It is, however, allowed by special exception in the agricultural residential zone, the AR zone, which is what they're asking for. So the applicant does understand that this application is approved, that there is another step that they would have to go through, namely making a special exception application to the Board of Zoning Appeals. The zoning of this property, if this is approved tonight, does not approve the business. That has to be done through the Board of Zoning Appeals. Everything as far as access, parking, and landscaping, again, since this is, would be a residentially zoned property still, most of this isn't anything that's required for their particular business. However, the Board of Zoning Appeals can require additional parking, screening, buffering requirements if they deem it necessary. Uh, the Planning Commission did have some questions for the applicant regarding the number of kennel spaces and dog runs, answered roughly about twenty and noise concerns. Uh, the applicant stated that they would be soundproofing the inside of the proposed structure to help control any noise issues. Following the public hearing, the Planning Commission did recommend approval by a unanimous vote. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Demasi from the commission? Any questions? Seeing none, I would call the Rutherford County Commission meeting into recess to hold a public hearing on this request. The public hearing is now in session. Anyone desiring to speak for or against this issue, please come forward and state your name, your address, if you are for or against the proposed request. Seeing no one coming forward, I declare that this public hearing closed and Rutherford County Board of Commissioners back into session. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval with staff comments.
I have a motion for approval with staff comments from Commissioner Reed and second by Commissioner Kush. Mr. P. Everybody good? Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, we'll be on the board, members. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
Nineteen yes.
Motion passes. Mr. Demasi.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Our second request tonight is by Ms. Charity McKenzie. This is located at ninety-one forty Versailles Road. Existing zoning is residential medium density, RM, and the proposed zoning is commercial neighborhood. Uh, information provided by the applicant states that she plans to open a mercantile where people can shop for locally sourced products. Hours of operation would be from around ten AM to six PM generally. Uh, she would be the only employee starting out, but did not rule out the possibility of other employees in the future. A concept plan has been provided. Again, it's on your iPads. The building was previously used as a church. Conversations with building code staff indicates that the applicant will need to have a safety inspection performed to make sure all life and safety issues meet our current codes. This property will have direct access onto Versailles Road. Uh, there is an existing gravel parking area on the property, which again was used by the church. Uh, rezoning or redevelopment of the property will require the applicant to bring the site into compliance with our current standards, including but not limited to those governing parking spaces out with surfaces, et cetera. And any new drives or improvements would need to be approved through the county highway department, and these improvements would need to be shown on an engineered site plan. They would also have to provide, uh, buffering and landscaping consistent with our ordinances and abide by the performance standards. Uh, the Planning Commission did have some questions as to whether the applicant had spoken, spoken with neighbors in the area. She answered that she had. Uh, she was also asked if she was prepared to make any necessary changes to the site, such as building code requirements and zoning requirements. And again, she did answer that she understood that there was going to be a lot of work involved with upgrading the property. Uh, following the public hearing, again, the Planning Commission did recommend approval by a unanimous vote. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Demasi? None from the commission. And therefore I call the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners meeting into recess to hold a public hearing on this request. Public hearing is now in session. Anyone desiring to speak for or against the issue, please come forward, state your name, your address, and if you are for or against the request. Seeing no one coming forward, I declare the public hearing closed. Rutherford County Board of Commissioners back into session. Is there a motion? Commissioner Reed.
Mr. Chairman, I move for its approval with staff comments.
Move for approval by Commissioner Reed with staff comments. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner P. and Mr. Serrino. Any further questions or discussion? Mr. Key.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Doug, I just noticed on here there was a coffee bar drawn in that doesn't have any, any excess need for a restaurant. Uh, it's still on the diagram, showed a, a coffee bar in the diagram.
Oh, on the concept plan you're talking about?
Right.
Well, I mean, as far as the use is concerned, it's okay. Now, she'll have to make sure that there's enough, uh, septic space for restaurants and things. That's all part of the process of upgrading this thing.
Okay.
Sir, yes.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the commission? Seeing none, we'll be on the board, members. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
Nineteen yes.
Motion passes. Mr. Demasi.
Yes, sir, thank you. Uh, our third request is by, I forget how to pronounce it, Brenda, I think it's Rarer or Rar, Rarer, thank you, uh, by Brenda Rarer, with a name like mine, I think I'd pronounce everybody's name right, but, uh, doesn't always happen that way. Uh, located along Lebanon Pike, uh, the existing zoning again is RM, as similar to the last application. And the proposed zoning is commercial services, which is a little bit more intense than the commercial neighborhood from the last application. Uh, this property on, located on Lebanon Pike, contained a house at one time, which was removed somewhere between 2013 and 2014, looking at some older aerial photos. Uh, since that time, the property has remained vacant. Uh, conversations with the applicant did indicate that there are no immediate plans to develop the property and that the zoning request was for investment purposes. Uh, she did state that they do operate a temporary fireworks tent on the adjacent property, which is a convenience market to the north on the corner of Jefferson Pike and Lebanon Pike. And at some point that if need be, they could move that tent to this property. Uh, a concept plan was provided with their submittal. It's really just more of a survey of the property, just kind of showing the lines and the existing septic site and whatnot. The property does have direct access onto Lebanon Pike. Any new access drives or improvements to that drive would have to be approved by T-Dot since Lebanon Pike is a state/federal road. Uh, commercial services-owned properties are also required to install a type-two buffer adjacent to other residentially zoned properties. That would only, on this one, be required on the east side, which is the rear or the backside of the property, because the properties to the north and south are both zoned, commercial neighborhood and services respectively. And performance standards would have to be adhered to as well. Uh, the applicant stated again that the request is for investment purposes and again stated about they might put a fireworks tent on the property at some point in the future. Uh, there were some questions about the septic site on the property. Uh, there is one there, uh, we just can't make any, uh, any statement as to how viable it is, but, uh, the concept plan did show the existing sites. Uh, following the public hearing, the Planning Commission did recommend approval by a unanimous vote. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Demasi from the commission? Seeing none, I call the Rutherford County Commission meeting into recess to hold a public hearing on this request. Public hearing is now in session. Anyone desiring to speak for or against the issue, please come forward, state your name, your address, and if you are for or against the proposal. Seeing no one coming forward, I declare the public hearing closed and Rutherford County Board of Commissioners back into session. Is there a motion? Commissioner Piercey?
Mayor Ketchum, I will move for the approval with staff comments.
Motion from Commissioner Piercey for approval with staff comments. Is there a second? Commissioner Cook on a second. Any further questions or discussions from members of the commission? Seeing none, we'll be on the board. Cast your vote, members.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
Nineteen yes.
Motion passes. Mr. Demasi.
Sir, thank you. Our last rezoning request for tonight is for property located along eighty, well, along Shelbyville Pike, eighty-seven, eighty-three, uh, by Mr. Javier Smith and Ms. Miriam Vega. Uh, this property is zoned RL and they are asking for commercial general zoning, which is the most intense of the three commercial zones that we have. Uh, the applicant currently operates his concrete business from the subject property. He came into the planning and engineering office early in March of this year to obtain a building permit for a storage structure they wanted to put on the property. It was determined at that time that his property wasn't zoned for what he was doing on the property and that he would have to request rezoning and have an engineered site plan submitted to our office in order to construct that type of building. Uh, he plans to utilize the property for storage of tools and equipment. Uh, we did include a concept plan of this particular property with your agenda packets on your iPads as always. Uh, this property does have direct access onto Shelbyville Pike. Again, similar to the application we just had, any new access drives or improvements would have to be approved by T-Dot as this is also a state slash federal road. Uh, commercial general zone properties are also required to install a type-two buffer adjacent to other residentially zoned property. Uh, buffering would be required along the north and the east and also a small portion of the south. Uh, there's commercial zoning, uh, directly to the south of the subject property and the performance standards would also, uh, apply to this particular property. Uh, the Planning Commission didn't have many questions for the applicant on this application. There was an adjacent neighbor who spoke about a possible encroachment onto her mother's property to the east of this property. Uh, after looking at our GIS aerial photography and speaking with the neighbor, the building codes director at the meeting stated she would send, uh, an inspector out to the property to see what was going on with any possible encroachments. I've talked to our codes director since then, Ms. Bell, and she stated that they did send an inspector out to the property and that they walked around the entire limits of the property, there were no encroachments. So that was relayed back to the, uh, the lady that spoke at the meeting as well. So after that discussion, the Planning Commission did recommend approval by a unanimous vote. And once again, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Demasi? Seeing none, I call the Rutherford County Commission meeting into recess to hold a public hearing on this request. Public hearing is now in session. Anyone desiring to speak for or against the issue, please come forward, state your name, your address, and if you are for or against proposed request. Seeing no one coming forward, I declare the public hearing closed and Rutherford County Board of Commissioners back into session. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, subject to all staff comments.
Motion for approval, uh, subject to staff comments from Commissioner Buchanan. Is there a second? Second, Commissioner Cook. Um, any further questions or discussions from the commissioners? Seeing none, you'll be on the board. Members, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
Nineteen yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Demasi. Announcement from Mr. Demasi, you're recognized.
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to give commissioners just a quick update on the Plan Rutherford, our update to our comprehensive plan. Uh, you recall, we had our kickoff meeting several weeks back. Uh, we talked about also we were going to be planning some community meetings more targeted to the different quadrants of the county. Those meetings are all going to be held next week. Uh, you all probably have received some correspondence from our, our consultant team, GNRC. I just wanted to, just to make a quick announcement on those. Again, the meetings will be pretty much every day next week except Friday. Uh, all times will be five-thirty in the evening to seven o'clock. Uh, on Monday, the sixteenth, the location will be at Plainview Elementary School. I think we'll be in the cafeteria there. Uh, May seventeenth on Tuesday, we'll be at Rockville High School and their library. May eighteenth, which is Wednesday, we'll be at Lascasis Elementary School and their library. And then May nineteenth, we'll be at the Town of Smyrna Event Center over there off of Sam Ridley Parkway. So we hope to see as many of you there as we can. If you can't make it to the one where it's kind of in your area, feel free to join any of the others. So just wanted to make that announcement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Demasi. Doing a great job. Thank you for taking that out to the citizens and letting them protect in this. Um, this moves us to item K. Members on your agenda, public comments. Now it's time for our public comments. Um, we ask that you come forward, give your name, your address. Please keep your comments to three minutes. Mr. Spence will keep you, so when you hit, he will keep the time. When you hear the buzzer, your time's up, you can walk back. There's no hole in the floor or anything, so everything will be good. Uh, first we have public comments. Mr. Paul Havelik wants to come forward and talk about reappraisals. Am I pronouncing that correctly? Mr. Havelik, welcome. Glad to have you tonight. You're recognized.
Paul Havelik, I live at ninety-one sixty-two, Twelve Corners Road in Lascasis. Uh, thank you for allowing me to speak today. Many of the residents of the Lascasis area are distressed by the rapid climb in the appraised value of our homes as well as its total assessed value. All have climbed dramatically since last year and have raised concerns about the actual tax levy we will be receiving. My wife and I are retired and our social security only gave us a three percent raise this year. On top of that, we've all been impacted by the extremely high fuel prices, food prices, and other associated costs of living that severely stress budgets. I know that we're not alone, and when this notice arrived, I was in shock. Not so much as to the increasing property values as this market in our area has gone insane, but what the new valuations will mean to our overall cost of living. After reaching out to others in the area, the increases shared with me are anywhere from thirty-one percent to its highest three hundred percent in our residential properties. My own has increased to one hundred and seventeen My own has increased to 117% from last year without any improvements, so this is all market-driven. We all know the reason for this insanity is due to the influx of corporate investment dollars into our area, purchasing homes, turning them into rental properties, as well as a large increase of out-of-state families following the jobs here to Middle Tennessee. That said, I'm in favor of fair taxation by the county government. I don't believe the intent of the current tax laws passed years ago was to bilk the residents of Rutherford County. The models used by the assessor's office were created during times of relevant, relative calm in the marketplace. However, these are not normal times. It appears that due to circumstances beyond our control, the county appears to be setting us up for dramatic tax increases, and that's the way our tax structure is set up. While as an individual, I have the ability to appeal this assessment, it's not going to resolve the problem, because it already exists at a higher level on all the associated properties. So unrealistic levels are in place here due to people coming in and buying properties with very deep pockets. I would like to request that the county commission try to address this problem prior to approving the assessor's proposed tax structure at the meetings in June and July. I'd like to propose a couple of quick alternatives to consider. One, temporarily freezing the 2022 tax rate to that of 2021, plus a reasonable amount to address the increase in costs the county faces. That way, we're all on the same page as all the residents of the county. That amount could be tied to the rate of inflation, as an example. I would then propose that the board request the assessor's office to propose a fairer system. Two, implement a process for the assessor that limits the annual tax increases based on a fixed percentage year-over-year, no matter what the property values are. Or number three, the assessor is concerned about actual variations. Maybe the tax variance between the market value and a more nominal charge for the residents could be paid only upon the property sale, as opposed to yearly, and we would only pay what would be at a normal level that you would determine. At that time, the current owners would have to pay the county the difference from the controlled level. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Havelik. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate your opinion. I'm sure it's felt by many. Next, we have item number two, K. 2, Susan Allen. She wants to talk about legal services agreement renewal. Welcome, Ms. Allen.
My name is Susan Allen. I live on Nelson Lane in Murfreesboro. As you know, the Rutherford Neighborhood Alliance believes the county would be best served by a law director and legal department that represents the county as its only client. The original legal services agreement, written by Jim Cope for himself and his law firm in 2009, to our knowledge, was never reviewed by an independent attorney to assure that the county had a sound document. We don't believe that anyone in the firm advised the county mayor at that time, or the commission, that this would be a wise and valid exercise. The steering committee had a good discussion about the renewal of the legal services agreement. Commissioner McAdoo was concerned that the county continues to receive the best legal services as we grow. Mr. Christiansen indicated that his firm also wants to grow, and that they interview outgoing law students on a regular basis. When your legal service work is done by an independent contractor, under the terms of this contract, you don't have a say in who their firm hires or know what qualifications they have. I didn't hear Mr. Christiansen indicate if they're looking specifically for new attorneys to help with county work. Any new attorney should be able to provide the best legal advice and assistance to you as a commission, to all the county's departments, employees, staff, and the office of the mayor. It would be interesting to know the qualifications the firm would consider necessary for new hires to have to work on county government business. Obviously, since the current contract expires June 30th, making changes at this point is not practical. So what can you do? The contract comes up for renewal each year that the citizens vote for county mayor and all commission members. If you renew this contract for no more than three years to get it off the election year cycle, it will give the new mayor, as well as new and returning commissioners, the opportunity to assess the services they have received in order to make a more informed decision about how to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Appreciate your comments. I'd like to move to item L on your agenda, members, elections and confirmation. Commissioner Reed, if you would, please come forward. You're recognized in the well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Elections and confirmations, item one. Commissioners, we're dealing with the election of notaries. Listings of these notaries may be found on your iPad. You also receive these by SharePoint. Mr. Chairman, I move to confirm the election of these individuals as Rutherford County notaries.
Commissioner Reed moves the motion. Second by Commissioner Piercy. Any further discussion, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Item two, steering would like to announce six vacancies on the Rutherford County Board of Health. Item three, steering wishes to announce two county representative vacancies for the Lineball Library Board. And item four, steering would like to announce two vacancies for CCRC, Community Care of Rutherford County Board of Directors. Mr. Chairman, this concludes the business of elections and confirmations.
Thank you, Chairman Reed. Next, we have a resolution to approve the consent agenda on item M, resolution. Chairman Pro Tim Phillips, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor Kettering. I've reviewed those items. I find them all appropriate to put on the consent agenda, and without objection, I move that the consent agenda be adopted as presented.
Without objection, we have a motion to accept. And a second, Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Cook. Are there any further questions or discussion? Without objection, will be on the board. Please cast your vote, members.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
Twenty yes.
Motion passes. Item N, unfinished business. We have no unfinished business at this time. That moves us to item P. Next on the agenda is item P, standing committees. First is our report is Budget Finance Investment Committee. Chairman P, would please come forward and recognize in the well.
Hopefully, we have a pretty quick report this evening. We have two items. The first item is P. 1A, and it has to do with the jail laundry fire and money that we'll be getting from insurance and moving that about. And the second part of this same resolution has to do with two retirees and making the adjustments that we have to as they retire. Resolution, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that the general fund be amended as follows to provide additional postage funds. For the jail, unassigned fund balance of $100,000, an increased revenue of RCSO insurance recovery of $89,716, and increased expenditures to other equipment for $189,716. Then, under various salaries accounts, we want to increase expenditures for an assistant $730, pension $75, Social Security $45, employee Medicare $10, other salaries and wages $2,580, Social Security $160, pensions $265, employee Medicare $40, and a son fund balance of $3,905. Resolve this 12th day of May 2022. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion. Is there a second? Second, Commissioner Reed.
Mr. Chairman.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Gurley.
Yes. This is here at the top, additional postage funds. I see nothing in this to indicate postage funds. I would like to make an amendment to this motion to delete the word postage from the introduction to the amendment, so that we have clarity in the amendment. In the motion, delete the word postage.
And I accept that as part of the motion, and I agree with you. I kind of got caught by surprise for that.
I think this is just a typo, but if we amend this motion to delete the word postage, then the motion is proper.
All right. Have a motion for an amendment to delete the word postage. We got a second, Commissioner Kush. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Back to Commissioner P. Make your motion.
Yes, you want me to restate it?
No, you just have to do a vote on the other one.
Yeah. We're ready to vote?
Yes.
All right, members, will be on the board. Cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
Twenty yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, next item is P. 1B, and this has to do with the increased price of oil and how it's hit our highway department. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the highway fund be amended as follows. Highway and bridge maintenance, increased expenditures for asphalt $750,000, and a decrease in assigned fund balance of $750,000. Resolve this 12th day of May 2022. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion. Second from Commissioner Johnson. Any further discussion, questions? Seeing none, will be on the board. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
Twenty yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Chairman P.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have our health and education report. Chairman Allen, no report. Property management committee report. Chairman McAdoo, I believe you have an item.
I've got a resolution on a plaque agreement with the Town of Smyrna, where Rutherford County is the owner of approximately 4.37 acres, acre tract of real property located at 135 Weekly Lane in the Town of Smyrna, and where the Town of Smyrna desires to acquire an appropriate, to acquire one acre portion of the Weekly Lane property as reflected on the attached Exhibit A. And where, at this regular scheduled meeting on October 14, 2021, the county commission passed a resolution approving the conveyance of the one acre to the Town of Smyrna in consideration for the Town of Smyrna's satisfactory completion of a list of items set forth in the resolution, one of which was to create a file plaque reflecting the conveyance of the one acre and the new sanitary sewer easement to the county's remaining portion of Weekly Lane. And where the file plaque provides that the Town of Smyrna will construct, inspect, and maintain an eight-inch public sanitary sewer extension to the county's remaining portion of the Weekly Lane property. And where the county engineer has reviewed the file plaque attached to Exhibit A and recommend approval for the same end, where is attached here to is Exhibit B, in a letter from the town manager for the Town of Smyrna affirming the Town of Smyrna remaining responsibilities and our conveyance in consideration for the convenience of the one acre. And where it is in the best interest of the citizens and residents of Rutherford County that the file plaque attached heretofore is Exhibit A be approved. Now therefore be resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the file plaque attached heretofore is Exhibit A shall be and hereby is approved, and further that the appropriate officials for and on behalf of Rutherford County be and hereby authorized to execute the file plaque attached here to Exhibit A. Resolve this 12th day of May 2022. I so move.
Have a motion. Is there a second? Second, Commissioner Gammon. Discussion or questions? Members, for those not on property management, this is our current lot where our convenience center is located on Weekly Road there in Smyrna, on the backside of the base. They, Smyrna had been using part of that acreage as a drop-down lot for their water department. So an agreement for giving them one acre, which will allow us three acres, they're going to run a public sewer. We already have water on it, but they will run the public easement and sewer to that facility, and then we'll be able to move our new proposed convenience center down to G Street down near, on the same tract that the county currently owns, closer to Ms. Crowell's license plate office. So then the commission, at the appropriate time, will be able to either put it up for sale or do whatever they want to do with the property, but with sewer on it, it'd be much more attractive, I think, for someone to purchase. So that was just kind of a synopsis of what we're doing with that. Any questions? Commissioner Kush.
Thank you, Chair of the Commission and Chair McAdoo. I have a question. In these discussions with the city, did they indicate when the construction or installation of the new sewer may take place? Is it on the calendar?
Mr. Christiansen.
Thank you, Mayor. In speaking with Jeff Peach, the town attorney for the Town of Smyrna, I asked that very question, and I asked that there be a statement in Mr. Hercules's letter to us, to that effect, and they estimate that they're going to begin construction within 60 to 90 days, of course, subject to all the necessary approvals.
Other comments or questions? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. Let's go on the board, since we're doing a financial transaction, giving away property. If you would, please, members, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Clerk.
Twenty yes.
Twenty ayes, motion passes. Thank you, Chairman.
Also, I'd like to thank the county attorney for working with this. It took us about a year to get this plaque. Situation resolved with Smyrna, but we wanted to make sure all i's were dotted and all t's were crossed, because we didn't want anything to come down in the future against us on this project of giving this land to Smyrna. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Next, we have item four, Public Safety Committee, no report. Commissioner Reed, Chairman Kush, Public Works, Planning, no report. Steering Committee, Chairman Harris, no report. Brings us to other business. I believe Commissioner I believe Commissioner Piercy, and then I think Commissioner Key has requested. Commissioner Piercy.
My concern was on the reassessment. Of course, like everybody in this room, I'm sure you've had phone calls, many visits. We have programs for the elderly, we have programs for the disabled, but we don't have anything for the people that's not going to sell or move, having to pay, that will have to pay probably a heavy increase on their taxes because of something next door sold in a bidding war. It was listed and then run up another $100,000, and finally they took the offer. I feel like it's not really, I don't know if you'd say it's fair, but it's not an equal assessment. I'd like to see, I don't know whose committee it would have to come from, it may just have to come straight off this floor, but I think we need to try to take care of the people that's not going anywhere, people that's lived here 20, 30 years, that want to stay here till they pass on. Why should they have to pay the influence of an overpriced sale home or property when they're not going anywhere? And like the gentleman that spoke about this a while ago, he had a good idea. It's not the same we can't reply to public comments, because every once in a while, there's a good idea in some of that, but it's never discussed, never talked about. If there was some way we could fix it, just say Mr. Rathard is not going to sell his house, he has no intentions of selling it now. Should he change his mind in two or three years, add the increased assessment onto it and take it from the sale of the property if it's sold at a high rate than it was supposed to have, like it's doing now. I don't know. Would that have to go through a committee? Would it have to come off the commission floor? Can it even be possibly accomplished?
And I'll turn it over to the attorney, Mr. Christensen, in just a moment, but just a week ago, I went down to the property assessor's office and appointed the appeals board. And the appeals board is made up of citizens who have volunteered to be on that, and they will be hearing all appeals, so citizens can go and appeal in front of them, and they will assess it, what is fair across the board, on whether or not they should have to pay what has been assessed on their property at this point in time. I do know, when I served in the State Senate, we kind of modeled the property tax freeze bill after the state of Alabama and a couple of other states for our senior tax freeze bill, because they had it in those states, we didn't have it here. We passed it, and it had to have, you can't, we're not able to do it by county, it had to have statewide application, so it was a bill that had to go through the General Assembly that made it allowable. And then it gets deeper for me, I'm not sure if a county commission board would have the authority to give away taxpayers' dollars on a program like that. It would have to go through the General Assembly.
I don't know, but I think what gets missed in all of this is the certified tax rate, that in a reappraisal year, a calculation has to be done that is revenue neutral. So, tax revenue is a function of appraisal value times rate equals money, the money that the people pay into the coffers. In a reappraisal year, and what he is saying, the calculation has to be done next, is that appraisals go up, times something to get the same number of tax dollars. So, if appraisal values go up, tax rate has to go down. So, that's what we're waiting on, is that appraised, not the appraisals, because he's got that, it's the certified rate. And the way I equate all this too, I can't remember what he said, I thought I wrote it down, what he said, the average increase of the assessments, 43? Okay, so I remember the year that it was like 30-something, and so in my mind, so I look at it as the whole county. So, if the math should work, is that if my value does not increase more than 43%, I should overall be paying about the same amount once we come back with the certified rate.
Mr. Beatty, you have any comments or additional comments you'd like to make? I'll call on Mr. Gurley, but I can suspend the rules if you do, just nod, and Mr. Beatty. Okay, Mr. Gurley.
Yes, I'd like to follow up on what Director Nolan's talking about, on two parcels in Rutherford County. I just calculated the increase on one of them is 51%, so I'm going to be paying more on that one. The other one stayed right around that 43%, so I should not be paying any more taxes once the tax rate. I heard the gentleman, it's a complicated issue, and it's not something you can do quite simply without a lot of study, because I heard the gentleman say, let's just freeze it at last year's tax rate. If he wants a real tax bill, we can do that. We can set the tax rate at last year's tax rate. With the reappraisals, that will be a bonanza of funding for Rutherford County, because that's not what's going to happen. The tax rate's going to be, we don't know what it will be, but we know it's going to be much lower than our current tax rate, just due to the state law. So therefore, be careful what you wish for, because if we did that, and I think it's within the authority of this body to set that tax rate at last year's tax rate, but that would be pouring in a lot more money into the coffers of Rutherford County. We would have to, by law, acknowledge that we're doing that, if I read the law right, but that's not something we want to do. We're primarily trying to keep this revenue neutral, so yes, in some places, some people are going to be paying more taxes, some people are not going to be paying more taxes, and some people, due to the average, may be paying less taxes. You've got to look at the whole picture and not just look at, I think Mr. Mitchell's wife may be right, maybe he should have put a do not panic button up there at the top of his notice, because I think that's what a lot of people are doing. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Gurley. Mr. Beatty, any comments you'd like to come forward? Without objection, we'll suspend the rules to allow Mr. Beatty to come back and mention anything that we might have missed.
I want to just be clear, I think that's true, that certified tax rate, and I'll go back, taxation is a part of state law and the state constitution. It took a constitutional amendment to put in the senior tax freeze. So, as we make those changes, I know it is at least legislative, and some of that is constitutional. The rates which things are charged are all part of the state constitution and are not decided on just, you know, we just don't make decisions about those, that's the way that they are dictated. I think it's interesting, I like to kind of point this out, that the state agency that oversees the taxation and this county board that will meet starting in June is called the Board of Equalization, and there's a reason, because the reappraisal is not to create revenue, it is to make sure that, because taxes are based on a percentage of value, that those values are adjusted, because some properties are going to increase in value larger than others. And so, it's about making sure every four years that properties are the right percentage of actual value, so that that tax rate is applied to that. So, in time, if rates go up, you know, we may be at 90%, but if we're all at 90%, we're still being taxed fairly based on that rate. So, it's about everybody being fair. And another point that sometimes people miss, we are a fractional assessment state. So, your appraisal, if it's $100,000 and it's residential, you're going to pay tax on 25% of that. The tax rate will be applied to 25%. If it is a commercial piece of property, which is multifamily, commercial, or even a duplex, if it's not owner-occupied, it pays tax at 40% of the appraised value. So, it is going to pay a higher percentage of its value in taxation. And then Mr. Mitchell mentioned the tangible personal property, a lot of folks going, what is that? Businesses actually pay a tax on the equipment used in the business, your trucks, your ladders, your computers, all of those things are, they have a value, and they're taxed at 30% of that value. So, all of those go in, and then the tax rate is applied to that assessment. And then the state will come in with the assessor's office and set the certified rate that says the properties as they existed in 2021, because you're going to have new growth, it's pretty complicated, but that we recognize a tax rate that creates the same amount of revenue from existing properties as it did in 2021. Now, some folks will pay more, some folks will pay less, but the aggregate will pay the same amount. And then after that, if that rate adjusts, it has to be recognized as a tax increase. Today, we're paying $221.94, let's say, and I have no idea what this number's going to be, but let's say the certified tax rate is $2. It may be that, more or less, but it's $2. Well, this commission would have to recognize that $2 is the neutral rate. At that point, you could adopt that rate, or you could look at the budget and say, that needs to be at 205, but then you would have to acknowledge that that 5 cents is a tax increase, and would be subject to a public hearing and all of those conversations. I hope that helps, not too much. But so, that new assessment, those increase in values will be accompanied, I'm confident, by a significantly lower tax rate. In fact, we have pretty historically low rates. If you look back historically, as a percentage of value is lower than it has historically been back through the decades, even going back past centuries.
Okay, any questions? Thank you, but, go ahead, Commissioner Kuch.
I guess in respect to the speaker, so if the average increase in value was like 44%, 43%, the certified rate will be based on that amount?
Yes, sir. And in a broad 30,000-foot view, that's the best way, that's the way I understand it, not dealing with the appraisals of that, yes, sir.
Okay, so a retiree who made no improvements on their property, going to live there for the rest of their lives, and their property value went up 100%, is it fair to say that they're going to get a 60% tax increase?
Probably, the numbers.
I think that's a frustrating thing.
Well, yeah, it's hard to know that number, and I don't want to be evasive, I just don't, I don't know till we get that certified number. If they're on the freeze, they're not going to participate at all, but anybody, I mean, if your value goes up higher, significantly higher than the average, than the median, is probably the statistics term, and I barely got through statistics in college, it was one of the rougher courses I took, then your tax amount, your actual tax dollars will increase. The further you are above the median, the more increase you will get in tax. At the median or below, you should probably recognize a decrease in the amount of your taxes.
Any other questions? Commissioner P.
Just a couple of comments. First of all, I think Mr. Beatty, he's done an excellent job of explaining, and also, Lisa, our budget committee is diligently planning on and trying to have no tax increase this year. Some of us have stated that, that is our goal, which means that we would pick up the certified rate after we get that from the state, as we've been explaining. And basically, if 43% is the average, if you look at your tax bill and you are assessed higher than 43%, even if we go back to a certified rate, then you would possibly see an increase. If you're below that, you're probably going to see a slight decrease. And yes, our property taxes do get decreased occasionally. If you remember when we had the tornadoes, people that lost structures on their property, you know, that was reflected in their tax bills. But the reason I actually stood up, I wanted to repeat that, but I wanted to request that the county on our television channel and also on our website reflect how, step by step, and who to call, our people can get a tax freeze, you know, for our 65-plus, and also the tax relief. If we've got that where people can see it, and it amazes me, I'm going around knocking on doors right now, the people that still don't know that this is available. This is something that this commission in the past have worked very hard to do with our legislators, to get this passed, and it wasn't easy. I had people calling me from Memphis to Bristol, saying, man, let's do this, but it had to be passed statewide, and it's something we've worked on for several years. And the state actually sets that amount, what it's, I think it was 40, 42,000-something, Teb?
44,920.
44,920, so it's, and actually will increase occasionally.
It increases every year. The control of the treasury is charged with determining the cost of living increase and adjusting that amount, and it also adjusts every 10 years with the census, with the census data.
You know, the good thing and the bad thing about living in Rutherford County is we're one of the fastest-growing counties in the state, year after year. We've been one and two, maybe three on rare occasions, but we've also been in the top 10 in the nation for growth. And that's all good for business and things like that, but, you know, someone like the gentleman that spoke, and his property taxes are increasing, he's on a set income, that's why we work so hard to get these things in place, and why, of course, we want to continue that. Things that are being requested, in my opinion, have to be addressed at the state level. We cannot do that here. We could send a resolution, not a steering, saying, hey, we need some relief, can you help us? But that's going to have to be decided at the state level. Anyway, again, just to repeat, please put that on our website, put that on our TV channel, how people can actually tie in and qualify for the freeze and what they have to bring. So, that'll make it a little simpler.
That's a real good idea. Chairman, Mr. Beatty, you think you could work with IT and get something on, you know, so they can put it on RCTV and start that educational process?
Yes, sir, and we're actually updating it, so that page is down today, but at rctrusty.com, which is our website, you can go, and there's a tab for tax freeze and tax relief that has that information, and I'll give you again our number, 898-7705, and we'll be glad to talk with you and go over amounts, if you're, because, you know, most of us are not accountants, so sometimes I'm not sure what I might, we're certainly glad to, in the office, look at it, or we can normally talk with you over the phone if in doubt what those amounts, where you are on the income qualifications.
All right, thank you so much, Mr. Beatty. We'll come back out of recess. Back in session, Commissioner Key.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Fellow commissioners, I had an opportunity today to receive a, I was contacted by a constituent who had a grave concern and said that they're not being heard, so I would be remiss if I didn't share this communication that they sent to me, and I know, and this is regarding public safety, but it's going before the budget before long, but I want to do my part and get this information out there from him. It's an officer with public safety, and he was up all night last night, couldn't sleep, and wanted to jot this down and send it to me, and I'm honored that he chose me, that I would get this information out. Let me read this to you. It says, "Good afternoon, Commissioner. We are less than thrilled with the 15% proposed salary increase. The initial pay study conducted by Burris Thompson and Associates suggested a 15% lift to the table along with changing the steps from 1.75% to 2%. The proposed salary increase is a 13% increase with a 2% step if the employee is due a step. To sneak our yearly step in the 15% proposed salary increase is a slap in the face to the gold standard employees of Rutherford County. The pay study that was presented was lacking one of the cities that was selected by the steering committee. When Hendersonville was added to the pay study, it raised the suggested table lift to 16%. However, the 15% suggested raise is what budgeted..." However, the fifteen percent suggested raise is what Budget and Finance approved to be presented in front of the commission. Yet again, the gold standard employees being paid less than average. A Budget and Finance member has been quoted saying that anything over fifteen percent involves a tax increase. If the commission only knew how many people are currently looking for jobs, I believe would cause them to worry. I've been offered two jobs in the last month, both of which offer quite a bit more money and only require forty to forty-five hours a week. Why have I stayed? Because I genuinely enjoy what I do. However, this job is costing me more than it is compensating me. I'm losing time with my wife and kids, I get to see my kids play more on my Ring camera that overlooks my backyard than I do in person. When my son takes the trash out at night, he will push the button on our Ring doorbell, hoping I will answer so we can talk for a minute. I need to be home, but with the below-average pay, I must work as much extra duty as I can to make ends meet and to save a little each month. I'm at a crossroads in my career. Do I choose to continue this path, or do I choose a different career that allows me to prioritize time with my family and provides greater compensation? The county is losing employees at rapid race, rapid pace. The county is struggling to fill positions that used to be highly sought after. The reason is simple, it's the money. We can't continue to just be average. The county wants gold standard employees, and in this market, you must pay better than average for gold standard employees. Tonight, we're asking those commissioners who have spoken out and said we deserve more to stand up for us and say in front of your peers, twenty percent is the minimum of what the salary increase should be." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Key. Any other business? That takes us to item R. Any other business statements or announcements? Commissioner Allen.
Thank you. Every year, we have a joint meeting between Budget, Health and Ed, and the Board of Education, and that meeting is going to happen on Tuesday, the twenty-fourth, at five-thirty in this room, and since education is seventy-five percent of our budget, I always encourage as many folks as possible to try to come and attend so we can answer all your questions or get them answered. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Allen. Any other statements or announcements? Mr. Dodd.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At Budget the other night, we had a very brief discussion about the fact that our insurance, medical insurance carrier had lost some employees and may no longer be able to manage our medical insurance.
That was not the carrier, that was the, that was the consultant.
Consultant that manages our program.
Our insurance is still with Cigna.
Correct, so thank you for clarifying that, I just want to be real cautious here. But, we were having to make some quick choices in replacing that, that manager. I wonder if we can make sure that, can we put on the next risk agenda that we consider the possibility of getting out some requests for proposals or requests for bids for management and have a competitive look?
I believe the contract with Mercer expired in August anyway, so yes, we'll be, we'll be looking to put that out for a proposal. So, we're supposed to meet, what the date is with one, whatever the name of the company is, we will be making that recommendation to the Risk Management Committee. This is a temporary agent of record letter to One Digital, I think is the name of the company, that get us through this with Cigna, and then their consulting contract will go through the proper motion, putting out notice, putting advertisements in the paper, et cetera, and accept bids from that standpoint. Yes, sir. Any other statements or announcements? Seeing none, we'll stand adjourned.